I'm meeting to order a rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Review and approve the minutes from June 12th, 2023, regular select board meetings. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any open public comment?
I don't want to waste time. Best, I think, with me. You can come up and tell me then. I wish you good luck. I'll be working with you up there. It's a little bit getting long.
There you go. There's incentive.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. All right. Discussion and action items. Everyone sign the bills?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, public nuisance ordinance amendment. Review committee feedback for the amendments. If the consensus agrees with revisions, then we will put it through legal review. Is there any conversation or questions? All right. So, Micah will send on to the attorney for his approval, and once he signs off on it, it'll come back to us for final approval. Thank you.
After we sign off, how long?
Sixty days until it becomes effective.
Sixty, okay.
All right. Next, Riverside Cemetery Management and Planning. Looking to advertise for a committee to review the existing policy and designate work tasks.
Yeah, I don't mind taking the bull by the horns on this one since the select board has taken charge of the Riverside Cemetery, but I think it would be a good idea maybe to, for a public body, to give staff some direction on it. I think the, I haven't looked over the rules, but I think they're pretty old. And I had a conversation with Celia last week, and it did appear that the, so as of right now, the overhead is covered by the revenue that we receive from purchasing plots, from people purchasing plots. I don't think that those are balancing very well. I think the overhead is significantly kind of overtaking that revenue. So, I think we need to have a conversation on it. And however the board wants to do that, I'm happy to facilitate.
Anybody have ideas, suggestions about getting a committee? I mean, I think that's what's needed, for Ben's sake.
We could advertise for a few volunteers.
Happy to serve on it, but I just, would definitely like some more input.
Yeah, and the revenue, there is an investment to count with a significant amount of money on it, in it, about $200,000. But, you know, eventually, I mean, if your overhead is too much, you know, that's going to dissolve. It might take quite a number of years, but you wouldn't want to end up there. All right, so I'll send out some advertisements, see who wants to serve on the cemetery committee.
Okay. Anyone here? Like to serve on the board?
Not only our website, but would you put it on, like, Proctor Parents or something?
Sure thing.
That gets pretty well read.
Anything else, Ben?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll start moving forward with that.
All right. Vast stream alteration permit approval. Is there a motion to approve the stream alteration permit for bridge maintenance inside the town forest?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Fiscal 23 audit engagement letter with Sullivan and Powers. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Sullivan and Powers to perform the fiscal 23 audit?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, health order and notice of intent for 2651 West Street. So there was a notice of intent added to your packet, and I just handed out the health order, too. So I need board approval to have that letter sent out. Does anybody have any questions on it or concerns?
No, I think it hits a nail right on the head. Motion to send it out.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
How long after before we can take action?
Well, I think in the health order, I may have left the meeting out, the meeting date, because I didn't know if we wanted it, I didn't know when it'd be delivered. So I think I put July 17th, so it wouldn't be the next meeting, but the one after.
So you got July 10th in this one.
Okay.
And the notice of intent. Put 17 in this one.
Okay, so.
I just noticed that.
Yeah, and I think it's because I was doing days by that instead of, I mean, I think, I don't want to extend it too long, but I'd rather have time to get it there and get us ready. Is that okay, the 17th? All right, so we can revise those tomorrow and.
Sure thing.
Or maybe before, maybe you can print it so I can sign it. Okay. So we'll prove it with that noted change. The Mortimer Proctor grant application approval. Is there a motion to approve the Mortimer Proctor application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is overgrown lawns and junk car complaints. So there's been a lot of complaints about people, mostly with, like, high, high grass in certain neighborhoods, and also, we used to kind of go after cars that were unregistered when people had more than, like, two in the yard. Now there's some who have, like, four in the yard, so that was kind of just put on the agenda to kind of discuss.
So I want to ask you a question. Homeowners and property and grass villagers vote. So are you picking on the tax burden and only the debt pay?
Where's the property that you're speaking of?
I'm not looking. I was on the board. There's property down there, Tom, and I don't walk.
You mean around the fields? That's always mowed.
There's a lot of property in town home that that town doesn't take care of.
That's always mowed, though.
He's talking about where it goes to gravel between Elm and.
The parking area?
No.
No, no, down on the corner.
If you went down Elm and it goes to gravel there, remember there was somebody that lived there before and, like, their problem, we have, like, a little bit of area there, because when we did the work down there on Horn Bridge Road, they dumped all the debris or the fell there when we were doing the work. So it's like on that little gravel area there. It's like a, there might be a water thing or something there. I can't remember what it is.
Well, I would consider that a lawn.
No, I'm not.
No, no, I'm not.
I'm just saying, that's what he's talking about. I just wanted to establish that for P Y L.
I would consider that a lawn, John, so I wouldn't think that needs mowing. Yes, it does.
You own the sand pit, a good example, sand pit. You should cut that grass going up to a sand pit. I mean, come on, let's be fair. Come on, let's be fair. I know this, you're not fair with your people here.
John, it's being fair to neighbors. There is an ordinance in place, so you're supposed to keep your lawn mowed, so people aren't doing it. I mean, some lawns are, like, two feet high, and their next-door neighbors, is that your phone? Is that your phone?
Don't add, don't add.
Is it your phone? No, I asked.
Don't add anything up, but I'm saying there's going to be some lawsuits coming up. I can see it coming. I really do.
Because they're not mowing their lawns, and the ordinance says they should.
I, I.
So I think we're going to follow the same process as we did on Hark Street, with just send letters to those people and give them that grace period to mow it, and if not, then we can.
Yeah. Yeah, and that method usually works.
Right.
Even before you get to enforcement. So I've kind of already begun driving around and just, you know, and I'm not spying on anybody, but there are some lawns, like one on West Street right now, you know, I'm six foot, so I'm, the grass is almost as tall as I am.
Right.
So that is well beyond, you know, any kind of forgiveness.
Exactly. Okay. And the cars, I think we talked about that once before, how the sheriff used to go, like, see cars that were unregistered. It's just, I just put it on there because I feel like a lot of properties are just kind of looking like they're just being let go. And again, it's for the people who have properties that maintain them, keep them nice. It'd be nice if everybody could kind of keep that level of, you know.
Yeah, and that's a tough one that we have to have a conversation with the sheriff about, because the last, this was just a conversation with a deputy I had, but if it wasn't a moving violation, then they weren't going to enforce it unless the town went through the procedure of the ordinance.
Right.
Which I believe is that the violation is recognized, and then a 30-day notice is sent out by the select board. The difficult part about that is it, you know, if we're just talking about vehicles with bad inspection stickers or, you know, out-of-date registrations, that's difficult to recognize from driving down the road.
Right.
So.
But we have done it in the past, and it's fine, the sheriff, we sent letters.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the sheriff was saying that he's not going to ride around looking for cars that, they don't want to enforce non-moving violations.
Right.
So that would just be.
So we, I think, brought it to their attention on which ones.
Okay.
Those streets. That's what happened in the past. We never, I think at one point, the sheriff said that they would drive around and look and kind of do a survey. That was their idea, that wasn't our idea.
Okay.
And then, you know, before, it's always been based on if we got a complaint, we would let you know, and then you would let the people know, and then the letter would be sent out, so. Around the topic. Excuse me, go ahead, John.
How come we are mowing other people's property?
How come we are? Well, we aren't right now. We aren't right now. Do you have a property in mind?
I'm going to go over it.
You mean that one area? Right before the bridge?
I see a lot of property that are being mowed, and we shouldn't even be mowing. It's not to tell them anything.
Is that what you're talking about, though, that piece of property?
I think I love it, but I'm just saying, I just ask a question. Why?
Well, I think lots of times they do it because they're already mowing up on our property, and they just do it to make, keep it maintained and looking good.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we all kind of call it a loan. You're telling me.
Well, I think it's nice that they do it. Okay.
Did the town purchase that property or not?
I thought we did. I thought only gave it to us.
I thought Pittsburgh owned it.
No, on our side of the bridge. Right on our side of the bridge.
Right, but I thought they owned that, too.
People eat doughnuts all the time. No, I think we bought that.
Rivers, I believe the dividing line, yeah. Because we paid for it, well, half the bridge was.
Yeah, half the bridge is ours and half the bridge is theirs.
Right.
Kane Street curbside parking. So I've had a couple complaints from different people about Kane Street and the cars, you know, and I know we went through this a lot trying to get that, so, and even the fire department had concerns because people are parking all the way up, and they wouldn't be able to get a truck through. So I went up and looked, and there are trucks and cars parked right along the road and stuff, so.
Always.
I thought we had put signs, we're going to put signs up, no parking on the side of the road.
I don't remember.
That was.
Weekend, I believe after the fire department complained a couple years ago, I thought we did.
Right, I did, too.
Right.
Was that part of the traffic ordinance that was passed before I got there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe you can look into that.
I'll look over those streets.
Translation with the transition.
Right.
And I know the past couple years since that I've been here, the, this, the road sign budget has been exceeded or right at it, so maybe this year, Kyle has a list of signs that need to be replaced around town, so I'm not sure how that's going to impact it, but I'll just start by going through the ordinance.
Okay.
Seeing where we need to put no parking signs.
All right. Any other business? Is there a motion to go to the select board meeting and to the board of water commissioners?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, delinquent water report.
So you've got two lists in front of you. One are active agreements that we have, and the other list with the smaller font are accounts in re-erage that do not have agreements. The larger ones, I've expressed clearly to Celia, the board's desire for her to put those up for tax sale, and we had that conversation again today, and it sounds like, you know, in July, that's what's going to happen.
So these all have agreements, this, that, these?
Correct, yep. And some of the agreements have, a lot of the agreements, everybody's been keeping up with them very well. I'd say maybe 20% of them have not, and what we'll do is, if we don't at least get a payment in June, you know, then we'll go out there and do a disconnect. We won't have to send a notice or anything.
Yeah, because there's 11 that haven't paid anything.
Yeah, some of them, you have, some of them are, they say D hap.
Right.
And for those, they're allowed to, but you're correct, there are a few on there that haven't made a payment. Now, St. Pierre, that was the special agreement that the board made. I know we were pretty clear that we wanted the payments on the first of the month, but she did call and to tell me that she's going to be here tomorrow to make her second payment, and then her third payment will be made July 12th. So I'm kind of trying to be flexible with them, because it sounds like they're going to have it all paid off before the July 31st deadline.
Okay.
And that's just kind of what it feels to me, just kind of part of the job, especially something like that. I mean, the idea is to keep them paying, you know?
Okay. Any questions?
There's three on there, I see, that are high. So yes, I'd be curious to see what Celia wants to do. But let's, this is a much shorter list, so. Oh, yes.
It's gotten better.
Certainly is. We have whittled it down.
Any other business under the water commissioners?
Actually, I did, I'm sorry. There is a leak, the board might hear about it. These things make it through the community pretty fast, so, just so we're all on the same page, there has been a water leak at Herb Johnson's property. It looks like it's coming from a main, and Kyle and the crew last week did locate one section that is evidently leaking. So they're making a plan now. They're going to call in a dig ticket and repair it, and, but it looks like there might be two leaks on that property, and they're pretty good. So, well, they're not good, they're bad leaks, but, and then the state conducted a walkthrough inspection of the wellhouse, and then I've got a follow-up meeting with them this week or the next on that. I didn't get any feedback on how it went, but they just had some administrative questions that need to be answered, and that's it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no other business? Is there a motion to go out of the board of water commissioners and then to the board of sewer commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anything else under the sewer?
The only thing I'd add is Aldrich and Elliott called me later on in the week. He said, so in June, we were supposed to have a 60% meeting on our scoping study. However, they're waiting for another town to get a cost on their sludge removal before they submit an estimate to us and the state. So we're just kind of kicking that ball down the road a little bit. We did agree that if we get into July and that hasn't all been solved, then we'll just go ahead and shoot for a high estimate for sludge removal and disposal. The good news is that the state and select board member Boucher and Hogan were at this meeting with the state that we had, the state didn't know whether sludge removal would be covered under the loan or not, and Aldrich and Elliott told me this week that it would be covered under the loan.
Yeah.
Which is, which is good news. I guess that might lead us into the question of how we, how the town wants to allocate ARPA funds, whether, I don't know if it can go, they've been, the state has been very clear that it can't go back to pay loans, but I'm not sure if they mean loans, you know, for projects.
That came out before the ARPA funds came out.
So it may still be an option to pay off that loan with the ARPA funds, but what's really good news about the sludge removal covered under the loan is that the loan is subsidized, and so those costs will be significantly less.
That's great.
It's going to be surprising, but.
Yeah.
On East Street, there's a big gap right in front of the sign that says, "Home of Mount Mountain," and it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Has anybody looked at that?
At the top of the hill, you mean?
Just before you get to the top of the hill. That's on East Street, that's on New Street.
I hadn't noticed it, but we take a look.
I mean, the town moves hard every day. They must feel it. They must feel it when they hit the, the East Street.
Okay. I'll check with Kyle.
Oh, yeah, I'll check with him.
Okay. Anything else? All right, is there a motion to go out of the board of sewer commissioners and back to the select board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Town managers' report.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be quick here. I'll skip over the policy and ordinance, ordinance stuff. We did, well, I'll say, we actually had a really productive meeting with the ad hoc committee for the public nuisance review at the pond, and we're really appreciative of everybody that came and gave us feedback, helped guide us in the right direction. Big news here is the South Street sidewalk project. All easements have been acquired and approved by the state. This requires me to work with our attorney to draft, oh, nope, I did that already, I apologize. So a letter has been drafted by our attorney. Now we're just waiting for a right-of-way clearance certificate. I've included a timeline of the project in your packets. We're just a couple weeks behind schedule, but that's okay, because there's going to be a big gap while we're waiting for bids for 2024. There is a concern with the state that tree removal will fall outside the scope of the easement, and I don't have an easement sheet in front of you, but the trees fall within the scope of the project, but if you were to grind the stumps down, you'd be going pretty far into the yards, and they would rather not grind the stumps down after the sidewalk is installed. So the removal of those trees could fall on the responsibility of the town. I'm not su, I hope you know which ones.
Sandy trees?
Yeah, there's one on each lot. They're big coniferous trees.
Big pines.
Yeah, big pines. A definite decision hasn't been made on that yet. I just wanted to make everybody aware of it. You can drive through and take a look. My fear is they're probably going to be pretty expensive to take down. We don't have a lot on, we don't have a lot of trees planned to be cut down this year. So, you know, maybe they could fall within the scope of our right-of-way maintenance, but, no, they're big. Anytime there's a crane involved, they tell me the price increases exponentially. If I were to guess, a crane would probably need to be involved with these.
They're big.
Yeah. So.
They're mostly on one property, though, aren't they?
There's, you know the yellow house with the heart on the fence?
Mm-hmm.
All right, there's one in there.
There, and then two next door?
There's only, there's one there, and there's one on the house that burned down.
Right.
And they're putting siding on, so it's only two.
They're big ones.
Yeah, they're big. The problem is, this, the committee that helped plan the sidewalk project wanted to protect them, but the homeowners want them gone.
All right.
So that kind of messed up the planning a little bit for when we went to go get easements, because after they had signed the easements, they said, oh, by the way, you know, go ahead and get rid of those trees, you know, that's why we're excited to do the project. All right, so that's everything with the South Street sidewalk project. We can discuss that every, after everybody's had a little bit of time to digest it. Summer paving, I'm still waiting on a formal agreement from the state to, so that we know that we have the funding for sure, and then I'll send out bids. The bids are ready to go. All I do, all I have to do is stick them onto an email and send them out and post it in the Herald. And I reached out, I reached out to the, I'm moving on now, I reached out to the state to give us a little bit of advice on the logging trail. Again, I've been up there, I've been up there with our forester, I've been up there with our public works foreman, a few contractors want to go up there with us. I've hiked some pretty bad logging trails in my day, so, and the engineers don't want to touch it. Dufrane Group, you know, Aldrich and Elliott, it's not really in their wheelhouse.
Yeah.
So I'll just get a second opinion, and then we can, we can base our decision off of that. We've gotten two facility use agreements. There's a private high school, well, not a private high school, but there's a high school graduation party held by not the high school, at the rink on, it was already held.
It already happened.
I got the insurance and stuff.
It's all new.
Yeah, I got it all approved. April Sloan had it. But, and then the Proctor School, the high school summer program, well, I think it's just a school program. You shaking your head no?
It's the elementary school.
Elementary, okay, yeah. So the elementary school program, there's going to be about 46 students every Thursday and Friday at the pool. I've run this past Gannon, and he feels like they have the capacity to manage it safely. And Ms. Colty's signature isn't on the facility use agreement, but I made contact with her on the last day of school, and she gave me the verbal okay. The garden out front looks great. Again, Peggy Stattle's been here, you know, three times, we checking on it, watering it. We added a few more plants to it, and if you look, there's little rocks, propter rocks that have been going in it, which is nice. We talked about the cemetery commissioners, we have approved the audit agreements, we've got our notice of intent, we've done our vast trail, bridge rehab, we've got dam inspections coming up in July, and we talked about ARPA, and that concludes my manager's report.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
Just to go back a little bit, dog licenses, where do we stand on those? Usually Celia gives a list to the sheriff's department.
You know, she got injured, I think you and I spoke about this, and then she got injured, and it didn't come back up, and I haven't spoken to her about it.
Okay.
I can pass that message down to her.
Anybody have questions on that?
Like the details on some of these incidents, it's good to know.
Okay, foreman's report. Anybody have questions on that?
I just have one addition, Meg, that we have been getting, I hate to say this without anything written, because people give me a hard time when I report complaints that aren't formally documented, but I've been getting a lot of phone call complaints about the condition of West Street. So Kyle and I took a ride down there. First of all, most importantly, I had to get measurements for the pavement bids for this year. Secondly, we did notice that the potholes have gotten really bad going southbound, so we didn't.
we didn't want to because we know we're repaving it, but we're going to have to do something about it. And Kyle said he's just going to get some hot patch and throw them in there and tamp it down and it should hold for the next couple of months until we go through and mill it all up and pave it.
Any other questions or comments about the report? Treasurers' Report? All right. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to find that premature and general knowledge regarding the appointment or employment of a public, an employee would clearly place the public body at a substantial disadvantage if discussed in public?
So moved.
Is there a, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to enter executive session to discuss the search appointment of a new town manager under provisions of 1 VSA Section 313A3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're going into executive session.